Mine. Echo. It's your. Good evening. Better. Good evening. My name is Art Sproul. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. This is the Planning Board hybrid meeting on May 19, 2025. It's 5:30 PM. Please note this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone is recording the meeting, please notify the Chair. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 28, 2025 signing of the of Chapter Two of the Acts of 2025, extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting laws, general laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until June 30, 2027, this meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 508-945-4410, conference ID 166172863, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast ensemble cast on Chatham TV, Xfinity Channel 1072, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. Beginning with road call vote, Catherine Halpern.
Present.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, present.
Bob Borshafter is absent. Charlene Greenhall.
Here.
Frank Shear.
Present.
Bob Dubas.
Bob Dubas, present.
And Art Sproul, I'm present. Let's begin with a public hearing, first public hearing for 15, 155, 157 Bridge Street, Eastward Companies. We'll begin with the clerk. We'll read into the public notice into the record.
As required by Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81L and Section 81O, the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham will hold a public hearing on Monday, May 19, 2025, at 5:30 PM at the Chatham Town Hall Annex located at 261 George Ryder Road. Chatham, Mass. to consider the application of Eastward MBT LLC trustee for approval of a definitive subdivision plan entitled Subdivision Definitive Subdivision Plan Number 155157 Bridge Street, Chatham, Mass., prepared for Eastward MBT LLC Land Court Certificate Number 225188, Lot 7, Land Court Plan 16036-C, showing a division of land owned by Eastward Companies Business Trust, 155 Coral Road, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Plan prepared by Outmost Land Surveying, Inc., dated March 3, 2025, and showing two lots, one which, one which being a panhandle lot, topographic plan and driveway plan and profile, plan prepared by Clark Engineering LLC, dated March 24, 2025. Copy of the plan and application will be reviewed by the Community Development Department located at 261 George Ryder Road on weekdays, Monday through Friday, between the hours of 7:00 AM and 4:00 PM and between 8:00 AM and 12:00 PM on Friday. Any person who is interested or wishes to be heard on the proposed definitive subdivision plan should appear on the date, time, and place designated for a hearing. Charlene Greenhouse Clerk, dates printed in the Cape Cod Chronicle, May 1 and May 8, 2025.
Okay, we received the letter from the applicant dated April 29, 2025. Dear members of the Board, Eastwood Property, Eastwood Companies is requesting a withdrawal of the definitive subdivision for 155, 157 Bridge Street without prejudice. We appreciate your consideration of our request.
Mr. Chairman, I would so move we allow for the withdrawal without prejudice.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, we'll do a road call vote. Catherine Halpern.
Yes, I approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, I approve.
Charlene.
Approve.
Frank Shear.
Approve.
Bob Dubas.
Approve.
And Art Sproul, I approve. Okay, next, we have a definitive subdivision plan. This is a public hearing for 48 Sylvan Way, Franklin Pitco LLC. The clerk, we'll read the notice into the record, please.
We need to figure out a shorter way to write these.
Yes.
As required by Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Sections 81L and 81O, the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham will hold a public hearing on Monday, May 19, 2025, at 5:30 PM at the Chatham Town Hall Annex located at 261 George Ryder Road, Chatham, Mass. to consider the application of Franklin Pitco LLC for approval of a definitive subdivision plan entitled Plan of Land in Chatham, Massachusetts, as prepared for Franklin Pitco LLC, showing a subdivision land owned by Franklin Pitco LLC, 3631 Wood Lake Drive, Bonita Springs, Florida, 34134. Plan prepared by Paul E. Sweetser, PLS, dated April 23, 2025, and showing two lots. Proposed site layout subdivision, definitive subdivision, 48 Sylvan Way, Chatham, Mass. Plan prepared by Project Development and CSN Engineering, dated April 23, 2025. A copy of the plan and application may be reviewed at the Community Development Department located at 261 George Ryder Road on Mondays through Thursdays between 7:00 AM and 4:00 PM and between 8:00 AM and 12:00 PM on Fridays. Any person who is interested or wishes to be heard on the proposed subdivision, definitive subdivision plan should appear on the date, time, and place designated for the hearing. Charlene Greenhouse Clerk, it dates, it appeared in the Cape Cod Chronicle, were May 1 and May 8, 2025.
Okay, I'd just like to go through and read the procedures that we will follow for this public hearing. The notice was read, and next is there'll be a presentation by the applicant. After that, the board members will ask, have questions or comments of the applicant. When the board is finished with their comments and questions, then we'll open for public statements in favor of the application. We'd like to ask that these be limited to four or five minutes each. Next, the Chair will read any correspondence. Next step will be the public statements opposing the application. A rebuttal, board, the more, they'll continue with board comments then, and then the hearing will close and the board will deliberate. After the hearing closes, the audience participation is not permitted during deliberations. So if, the applicant, if you can introduce yourself and your, your team members.
Paul Sweetser and Toby Leary presenting. What you have in front of you is a subdivision. It's two lots, Lot 1 containing 71,211 square feet, Lot 2, 65,441 square feet, and we have designed basically a T-road that gains frontage for both these lots. We have provided road profiles with a layout of the road in it, and we were taking into consideration some of the comments that we heard in the field about trees in the area. And we would like to present something to you, just as, as an alternative, if you want to take it up.
Is it okay to approach?
So what you have in front of you, there's two sheets. One shows the, the green line that shows the actual design for the road layout as, that was, that was presented on the road profiles, and it also has an overlay shown, a blue line, showing how we're trying to follow the actual existing road to avoid the trees so that we can try to save and preserve those trees. The second sheet removes the green line to try to make it easier to see how we're trying to shift the, the road to fit it within the road layout and just make it so that, hopefully, this is something that you might like. We're also trying to ask for a little bit of a waiver to make it 15 feet wide on the inside of the subdivision, and it's still 20 feet wide as it enters into it.
Can I ask just a quick question?
Sure, yes, please.
The proposed alternative roadway, how close is it to the property line with Ralph H. Leonard?
I can't hear, what?
How close is the proposed road to the property line shared with Ralph H. Leonard?
Okay, that's probably approximately about five feet, six feet. I mean, if we have to move it a little bit, we can try. This is just, we're just trying to avoid those trees.
And unfortunately, on the plan, it, it doesn't show all the trees that would be impacted, but the left side, I'm sure you remember from the site visit the other day, that left side of the road is, is all trees. So there's a bunch of trees that would be impacted from the, from the subdivision layout. And then on the right side, there would be also a couple of trees on the right side that would be impacted as well, not to mention the ones on the inside. You can already see the, the four that are directly within the Hammerhead design here. That's actually more like six or seven trees, because the first one is a cluster of four. So there's a good amount of trees there that would be impacted if we don't get some sort of relief.
Yeah, is there anything else you'd like to, to state as part of your presentation?
Well, we, we were also, just like to point out as part of the, just for the record, the, the Sylvan Way itself is probably about 12 feet wide the whole way down. We're not trying to open a can of worms, but we're going to have a much bigger area on the new proposed than even just the access point now. So we're looking to improve whatever we propose or whatever the board grants us will, will be better than it is on the way in, so to speak. So, you know, we're not necessarily looking for all the relief and trying to make it the same as, as Sylvan Way, but it is about 12 to 14 feet on the, on the ingress of Sylvan Way.
Okay, let's begin with Bob Dubas. Some questions, comments for the applicant?
No, I'm looking at the two plans that we, and we were there on a site visit. We, we all noticed how nice the trees were looking, and, and personally, we did say that you had to have a 14-foot-wide road, driveway road, but where it ends on the T, it can narrow up. But I'm, I'm willing to give leniency towards a five-foot setback to Ralph Leonard's property line in order to save a few trees, considering it's only going to be a driveway for the people that live there. It's not something that people are going to go down and go around, around and around and around and around. They're, they're going to go down and they're going to turn around in the T, in the Y. I'm going to call it a Y instead of a T. And that, that should be sufficient width to turn a fire truck around, a moving van around, and I don't see anybody going down that road and going up to the front of the house that's being built there and just for la-laws to turn around. And the impact on the next lot to the left of that will be minor, considering they won't ever go up that right-hand side, and the left-hand side has plenty of room right now. When the construction people go in and out of there, they're not going to interfere at all with that side. So the impact on the right side is very minimum, and I think that the trees were such that it would be a shame to take the oak trees out on that side. I was a little shocked to see how many trees on this piece of paper that they were willing to take out to make the road at a 15-foot setback, and I'd rather give that 10 feet up myself personally.
Just as a point of clarification, on the right-of-way layout, is there any change to that versus the plan that was provided, previously provided to us?
As far as the right-of-way, no.
No, okay, so all of those distances and bearings are still the same?
Right, we're, the road would be contained within the right-of-way.
Within that.
But the right-of-way layout doesn't change, because that has your frontage and everything else, so.
Okay.
It's not changing.
Okay, Frank Shear, do you have any comments, questions?
Just that I agree with Bob, that's all.
Okay, Charlene?
Are any improvements going to be made to Sylvan Way itself, only at the end where you are coming into the property?
It's a, since it's a private way, even though we have all the rights to go down there, I'm just wondering how many angry people we might have.
That's why I'm asking the question, so there's no...
We're, we're trying to make sure that we're taking care of this, this end down here.
Okay. My other question is the right hand, I'll call it edge of the Y, because it is a Y, not a T.
This?
Yes, this. There's not going to be a driveway off of that, right?
No, it, it just goes up the right side and around to the house.
Okay, because on the, on the plan and profile, it's not showing that it's going to continue around the actual driveway?
Right, so what they were doing on the plan and profile was just showing what they were doing just within the road layout.
Okay, well, they do show, and, you know, I would, if they weren't going to be doing that, my question was going to be, why do it?
Yeah.
But if they are going to, which I, I feel more comfortable knowing that there's going to be a turnaround area.
Right, I mean, if you, if you look at the definitive plan itself, you can see the existing roads, which, when I first went out and did that survey, they were a little bit narrower, they're, they're a little bit wider right now. So that's exactly how they are, except they do connect at the top there by the house, so.
I mean, with this only being, you know, literally a driveway to the home, I agree that the setback to the, the property line, I don't have an issue with. Do we really need it even 15 feet wide, though?
I, I put down 15, but...
Yeah.
Wait, wait a minute, the only, the only part that has to be 14 is the Y. After that, you can make the driveway any, any width you want. It's just for the fire engine to come down and turn around, that's all it is.
So you can actually get it a little bit further away? I mean, it's only going to be a foot from the, the Ralph Leonard property line. You know, it is...
Okay, so make it the 14, so you get, you get it in a little bit further.
Scoot it, you know, that in. I mean, that's what I would be more comfortable with.
We, we had a previous subdivision, very much like this, T, and it was 14 feet is what we allowed, so.
I'm all in favor of 14, rather than 15. I mean, it's only a foot, but still.
Makes a difference.
It makes a difference.
Okay, Warren, do you have any comments, questions?
I was not able to go to the site visit, so I think I'll refrain from really having any substantive comments. Thank you.
Catherine?
I actually wasn't able to go to the site visit either, but from looking at the plans, I agree with Bob Dubas, Frank Shear, and Charlene's comments, and I think 14 feet is fine. Yeah.
Okay, just to go over, I have a couple of questions, but just to go over some specifics, our, our planner did a review on this, and there was no preliminary plan submitted. There was just a definitive plan, and you satisfied all the criteria for the definitive plan. The Board of Health review, the Board of Health is reviewing the definitive subdivision for the above-noted properties on May 19, 2025, and will make a recommendation to the Town of Chatham Planning Board at the meeting. We have, have we?
Do we have?
We did hear from the, the Board of Health this afternoon, yes, so they are all set.
They're all set.
And they didn't have any conditions?
Not that they told me.
Nope. We were there.
Okay, so I did have a, a couple of things. So I think, let me go down my list in here. The roadway cross-section, I'd like to be consistent to the section that we had agreed to with Cleo Lane, and it's just the material, and I'll just cite what was stated in that It's, it's similar to what the applicant has. It calls for three-quarter inch blue compacted stone at the surface and six-inch denser graded crushed stone or reclaimed asphalt, T base, compacted on top of the subgrade. So that's, just to be consistent, our, our subdivision regulations call for, for bituminous pavement, but when we see these Ts like this, we are willing to make a modification to go with the gravel base. The other thing I saw is this change, I think it's, it's going to change contours, it's going to change some of the drainage. We'll need to have all of those submitted as part of the revised plan.
That was one of the considerations that I was talking with the proponents of the, the site, and my thought is that if we can get the approvals, we have 20 days' appeal period.
Right.
We can submit revised plans to you post haste.
Okay, all right, so that, that is something that you're willing to do on this, because we'll need to see all the contours and that and how this is all going to work. You had four locations for some infiltration areas. Are you still having four, are you going to have two? That also would need to be something that you would need to update.
Yeah, the, actually, the, the areas for those are outside of the, the actual layout. I'm, I'm not sure if they'll change, but I'll leave that up to the engineer to make that.
Right, so we would like to see that revision, too? And again, what we asked for at Cleo Lane, which I'd like to be, some consistency, you're not showing anything other than a depressed area. We, we asked for a rain garden to be planted with drought-tolerant native grasses and native shrubs. So if you're going to have a couple of infiltration areas, we request that you include that element in it. On your cross-section, you, you have slopes off of the edge of where the gravel is going to be. to be. It would be best if you put some load and seed on a section of a certain width on that so that a shoulder is not just running any kind of sediment tarrows into your into your basins.
So, okay, what did you say about the size of that coming off there?
A couple of feet is is whatever makes sense on this, but again, what we're trying to do is just not let it run off directly into the infiltration areas and clog them all up, that's all. Bob?
Mr. Chairman, I think in our subdivision laws, it's supposed to be four feet, but
Four feet.
Considering considering that this is a narrow road.
Right.
I think that a two-foot sideline would be more than efficient. The only other thing that I want to question you on is I see you have six inches compact gravel with four-inch layer of three-quarter inch stone.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, you're wasting your money on the four inches. I would rather you put three inches down.
Yep.
It it's I don't want to see you get stuck in the stone. All right, and I only can say that from experience. So I would waive the four inches for you.
That 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 section is what we called for in in Cleo Lane, three inches is all we look for on the top gravel course, yeah. So I would also ask that to the adjacent properties to the east and to the south that you have some erosion control, just to make sure nothing is getting there. I don't know how these counters are all going to look, but that should be something that is put in place.
This is erosion control during construction?
During construction, right. And then it can be removed after everything is vegetation is stabilized. There are two plans that are labeled Septic Lot Number Two. I think we're if we're going to reference this in the conditions, we have to have a correction associated with that.
Yeah, that's the the project engineer put that down, so I would say, why don't we add to the drawing number Septic Lot Number Two, call it 2A?
Yep. That's fine with me. I just want to designate something different because our our 2A would be different than two, which shows all the septic plant on it, so. Then we should think about waivers for for what is being proposed in here. I think the couple that I see is the waiver on the width and the ravel on the bituminous surface course on that side. I'm not sure if there's others that board members will bring up. But that would be two things. Yes? Pardon me? Oh, yes, and I would say to have both of these waivers put on the plan, so when it's signed, it shows that these were actually approved as part of the process. I'm assuming that we'll go ahead and and vote on those for approval.
On the pro road profile plan?
Yep, that's correct.
In that case, would it be helpful to just take the one that doesn't have all the all the extraneous markings and just put that on the plan?
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna.
Yeah, okay.
No, I have to get that to the engineer and let him know.
Got it.
So that that's all the comments or questions that I have, so I'll continue with the public hearing process.
One question, did you want to post a bond or did you want to do a covenant? What's your method of surety that you're proposing?
I I think we're okay with posting a bond.
Okay. Okay.
You received an estimate this afternoon, so it's okay.
Right.
Which that might change if we're not required to remove all the trees, of course, so I'll leave that up to the board.
Right.
You know, and.
Okay.
And the survey and engineering don't need to be part of that either. It's the actual construction work.
Right, okay, so let's continue. I'll call for any public statements in favor of the application? Anybody who would like to comment? Seeing none. Any correspondence, Charlene?
Christine, and no.
Correct, Christine.
No correspondence. He did this last.
There's too many Cs. There's too many Cs here. Christine?
No correspondence.
No correspondence, okay. Public statements opposing the application? Yes, yes, sir, if you would like to get up and in comment?
Come on, Harry, you're gonna kick my ass or something?
How you, brother?
How you doing?
I am Harry Ellis. I'm here with my wife Gina. We're neighbors. You can see where our property abuts the property. We, that's my old homestead. The the Sylvan Way, that's a private way, and that's gated to me and my wife. So that's a gated piece of property. There's been no, nobody talked to us about anything, said a word, zero correspondence. What's the deal with the trees? They've already taken down 500. I mean, there was the deforested the whole property.
Oh, over there.
No, all here, all through here, you can see, very simple.
I'm not, I'm not quite.
Google arrest could tell you.
You have to be speaking to the to the board and chair, not to each other.
Please raise raise your questions to me, not to the applicant, please, yeah.
Yep, excuse me.
So I don't know what trees are you referring to? The only piece that we are reviewing here is where the T section is.
Yep.
And if there's something else occurring on the other pieces of property, that's outside of what this application is referring to. Mr. Dubas?
Harry, is that the property? If you're going down the road to the left?
Yep, with the green fence.
All all where the green fence is, behind the green fence, all that property that was the defiliated?
Yep.
Is that your property?
No, no.
That I don't believe that's their property.
Mine's mine stops at the fence.
Okay. That's what? That's what I thought, that's not their property. So I don't know who's done that, because I was I was wondering when I was there.
I'm saying.
I thought it was you that defoliated all that. You did?
No, I did not, no, no, that's that's.
Well, that's not their property, right?
No, this, okay, I think you're talking about, was it foul?
Because somebody somebody bought the lot off of somebody bought the lot off of Morton Road, and I believe that property is connected to it.
Oh, yeah, with the with the boat side?
Right.
Yep.
He sold that property to a person.
That's down there.
And that's who I think owns that property. So you're you're asking the wrong people.
Right.
The right question.
Yeah.
Well, what what I'm referring to is, again, I've lived there my whole life. I was born there, I'll probably die there. Right, all in in there, it took them three days to cut all the trees, pull all the stumps, rip it all out. So the fact that somebody's concerned about the trees, why now?
Because because that's not our purview, because we're only concerned with that property that you're seeing on the board right now.
That's it.
Yes, you're gonna have to yell.
Okay.
Yeah, why don't you, there's a pointer there, and it'd be best if you do that, because you have to speak into the microphone, sir. I'm sorry you have to do it this way, but it's the board board members and the public won't hear otherwise.
You gotta push the button, I think.
There we go. Nope, there we don't go.
There we go, okay.
I'm not doing too good with it.
Harry, I think that's that's the property that they've bought.
Right.
Okay, and we're trying and they're trying to keep as many trees as they can in there and still obey the subdivision law.
Okay.
I thought you were talking about the one on the side.
That's a, to me, a non-issue.
Okay.
But right in there, the only reason I'm even saying anything about it is because you talked about the trees. They were in there and they they ripped all the trees down that inside.
But that, see, they own it, and that's their prerogative. But they are trying to save.
Okay.
As many as they can.
If that's fine, that's fine. But it's a non-issue.
No, I'm more worried about the ones that just got annihilated.
Yep.
Did we answer your question?
Did you?
Yeah.
Yeah, about the trees, yep. The the other the other concern I have is that a right-of-way going to that they have a right-of-way.
So Sylvan Lane has been previously approved as a right-of-way, yes. It's a private way.
It's a private.
That was approved back, I believe it's 1988, isn't that right, Christine?
From the Elders.
Right.
The original approval of Sylvan Lane goes goes back quite a few decades.
So the fact that I have a deed that says I own the road means I don't own the road?
Well, a private road, you own to the middle of the road.
Not always, I don't.
You own the road, you're supposed to maintain it, whether or not.
Yep.
And they have the right to pass over it.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep. They have the right to pass over it for for one home, two homes, 10 homes?
Just just the homes that are on Sylvan, yeah.
Okay.
And this section here on the T will also be a private way, too, with the same type of provisions.
Okay.
But you're not responsible for the T.
Right.
You're only responsible from that line that's where it says Sylvan Way right there?
Yep.
And that out.
Okay.
And I'm sure that they will help you maintain it.
Not interested in it. Again, again, we got Airbnbs going in there. That's what's going to happen. Handwriting's on the wall. The traffic's going to be huge. There's going to be a lot of a lot of traffic.
I think these people that are building it are planning on staying there. I can't swear to it.
Nope, they can plan on anything.
They seem like very nice people.
They can plan, I don't I don't doubt they're nice people. You're all nice people. So is is there any stipulation on having an Airbnb?
No, that's not, that's not something that we control as a planning board.
Okay. All right. I guess I'm satisfied right now.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much. All right. So I don't know if there's any any need for any any other comments opposing the application? None, okay. So any rebuttals from anybody here on the board? Okay, then.
What are we, what is the name of this Y going to be? Is it going to continue to be Sylvan, or are they going to name it something else? Well, every road needs a name.
Can I kind of semi-address that? Having been the 911 person over in Howard, it'd be better to keep it Sylvan.
Could not agree more.
Yeah, I think that's a good.
Could not agree, but we need to address the name of the road.
Okay, all right. If there aren't any more questions, then I think we can go ahead with closing the the public hearing.
As long as the board members are okay with conditioning it to getting revised plans prior to the endorsement date, I certainly agree with that.
We can talk about the conditions now if you want, but I thought that would be something we'd be doing after we close the hearing.
Well, in case the there's a rebuttal by the applicant.
Okay.
To one of the conditions, I'm thinking we shouldn't close it yet. We may want to review those.
Yeah, in other words, you're suggesting that we not close, keep it open and continue it?
No.
Not not continue.
No, 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 not at all, actually. I'm I'm I have I have absolutely no problem as one of the conditions allowing for the revised plans to be submitted prior to the board endorsing the plan, because you can't endorse the plan until we have everything we need, so that's kind of our catch.
And any other comments about the conditions that were drafted?
No, but the public might be interested in knowing what they are if they haven't read the.
Okay, I can go through them.
And Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment? If we're gonna set a bond, did we decide we'll set a performance bond, we might want to set the amount.
Okay.
And the conditions.
We can do that, too, before we close.
Our amount setter.
That would be condition eight, I believe. All right, I'll briefly go through these. Physical features and data shown on the definitive subdivision plan represent the approved division of the land and installation of infrastructure. Any deviation from the approved layout constitutes a violation of the planning board approval, unless it is reviewed and approved by the planning board. There'd be planted land, Chatham, Massachusetts, as prepared by Franklin.
Dates are going to change, so.
That's correct. So as prepared for Franklin Pitco LLC, and there'll be a new date and a proposed site layout, which is now going to be titled Septic Lot Eight, Septic Lot 2A. And that will have a updated revised date on it also. Certificate certification by a licensed professional that the construction of ways and installation of public improvements is completed in compliance with the approved definitive subdivision plan, and the submission of an ASB plan to the Community Development Department is required prior to issuance of the certificate of use and occupancy by the Building Commissioner for the last dwelling constructed in the subdivision. The property owner is responsible for coordinating all inspections and payments with the DPW in adequate notice provided. Condition three would be Lot One and Two shall be subject to the terms of covenant of a covenant until such time.
That there's no covenant?
No covenant, so we're not going to be doing this one. The performance bond, I believe, is number eight, so we're not going to do number number three, that goes. The subdivision shall coordinate the provisions of municipal of municipal water with Chatham DPW Director. Five is utilities must be placed underground.
And I have a question on this only because the road section says no underground utilities.
Right, but if they do any.
I believe there is underground utilities, and when I looked, where we were parked, there's a road box, electric box.
There's an electric box, yes, there is electric. We were talking about water, though?
Yeah, there's and, yeah, there's a well on on.
I understand, so the only underground is electric.
Right.
Okay.
And for Lot Number Two, a well would be sufficient for that as well, would it not?
Yes, we had it shown, actually, on the septic plan that got approved, which it still has to go in front of them again after this is all done.
Perhaps instead it should say any future utilities must be placed underground if there's, you know, if God only knows what other utility may come through.
Right.
I have no idea, but just in case.
Yep. Okay. All stormwater shall be managed on-site in a manner that does not contribute to ponding, flooding, or erosion, anti-erosion. And again, we're the infiltration systems are going to be rain gardens now. Any future relocated dwellings on Lot One and Lot Two shall have downspouts and gutters connected to drywells. Item Eight is placed as a performance bond for the construction of the roadway. I think if we take a look at the estimate, we go about setting what that performance bond would be, I think we're talking about the 4,000 for the professional fees would drop out because we don't consider that, and now the tree removal is going to be much less with the approved location. Does that get cut in half? Does it, how far does that go down?
I think you could probably take that down by 4,000. I'm sorry, it's 7,000 if I remember correctly. You could probably take it down by 5,000, because I really think we're only going to have to lose one or two trees.
Okay, so.
If we if the plan that we proposed is accepted.
You take that, the excavation grading is 7,000 on gravel for the roadway, 7,000, so that would be 16,000. Does that make sense to you, Bob, to establish a?
Yeah, I I just put up a $10,000 bond.
10,000.
My thing is to make sure that it's landscaped a little bit nicer than it, then we saw it, that's about it. And and the gravel on the road is, so I think 10,000 would be more than enough to finish the road.
And the next condition would be Lot One and Lot Two shall not be conveyed into separate ownership until such time that the existing dwellings are moved or relocated in order to comply with the setback requirements of the protective bylaw.
I would like to see these notes, these conditions actually noted on the plan. I know they're they're going to be in the decision.
Right.
But as we all know, being in the biz for a long time, not everybody actually looks at those, they only look at the division, the subdivision plan.
Okay, may I ask a question about the last one that you just read?
Sure.
Okay, it says, I'm just going off the top of my head, actually, could you read it to me again, please?
Lot One and Lot Two should not be conveyed into separate owners. Lot 1 and Lot 2 should not be conveyed into separate ownership until such time that the existing dwellings are moved or relocated in order to comply with the setback requirements of the protective zoning bylaw.
Okay, the way we designed the lots is so that they would conform, plus you already have one house that's there that is conforming. It just sounds arbitrary.
Okay, all right, so, all right, that's.
Kind of a moot point.
Okay.
A moot point, yeah.
We actually thought it was boilerplate verbiage.
So essentially, we'll be deleting on condition three and condition nine. Well, yes, so we should put another condition describing the cross-section adjustment that we made in the conditions.
I don't think that should be a condition of this. It's more of we need to see the revised plans that would include that.
That would include that. Okay, so we'll include that as part of that.
And that these now seven.
Seven conditions.
Conditions would be, I know you had put in notes on plans, but.
No, it's it's not a problem putting the notes on the plans. I just wanna make sure that I have all the the writing, which I believe I have a copy of what you sent us.
You'll get those from Christine.
Yeah, she'll get a revised version.
Yeah, you're gonna.
We'll get a revised version tomorrow.
And and they'll also be in the decision that's prepared.
Right.
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 Okay. That's what I wanna hear.
The other things that Art had brought up were the the grading, the materials, the rain garden plantings. So I don't know if you need conditions for any of those things, and then the three-inch base.
My feeling is we won't sign or endorse the plan until Art is satisfied that those items are on the plan.
I will. I will check and confirm all of those. Right.
That's kind of our.
Yeah.
Our hold.
The notes, the notes that you want are gonna be going on the definitive plan.
Correct.
And the other stuff is going on the plan profiles and.
Right.
So I just wanna make sure we're on the same page.
Okay. Any other items that we need to go over on the conditions?
Didn't you say earlier you wanted a spot to where they you could sign off on the plan for those conditions?
No, there's a there's a separate signature block that would be on the plan, and that's assuming that all the conditions are are cited correctly.
Yeah, okay.
So that's where we would be signing off on it.
Perfect.
I just gotta find a place for my notes.
I think it's part of the confusion that comes about is because of the the change in the plan that we received today, so they're trying to work with you on that.
Yes.
Which we understand, because everything has been fast.
If we if we don't do it this way, you're gonna have to continue and come back.
No.
Okay. All right, then I think if we're set with that.
The signature block does not need to be as large as it is if that helps you.
I draw pretty.
I mean, I think I have one of the longest names on the board, and I don't need that much room.
All right, so I guess the. Next, we have a motion to, should we make a motion to close the hearing?
I would move that we close this public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Catherine Hopper.
Approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Charlene.
Approve.
Frank Shear.
Approve.
Obdubus.
Prove.
Art Spurri, approve. All right, so we've gone through the conditions. Is there any other deliberations that board members would like to go through before we have a motion to approve?
I'll give it a try here.
Thank you.
I move that we approve the definitive subdivision plan for 48 Sylvan Way for Franklin Pitco LLC. I'm not gonna suggest any dates or anything, because those are gonna change. So move that we approve that with the seven conditions as outlined and amended, and that a $10,000 bond be posted, and that prior to endorsement of the definitive plan, revised, a revised definitive plan and a revised plan and profile shall be submitted prior to this board endorsing that plan.
Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, the roll call vote. Catherine Hopper.
I approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, I approve.
Charlene.
Approve.
Frank Shear.
Approve.
Obdubus.
Obdubus, prove.
Art Spurri, I approve.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let me just clear some of my paperwork out of here. Okay. The next item is approval not required for Zero Marketplace, Dykens. And we do have a letter from the applicant. This is dated May 14, 2025.
Based on the letter that we received, I would move that we allow for the withdrawal without prejudice of the approval not required plan for Zero Marketplace.
Okay, do I have a do I have a second on that?
Warren Chain, I second.
Well, I will do a roll call vote on this withdrawal. Catherine Hopper.
I approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Charlene.
Approve.
Frank Shear.
Approve.
Obdubus.
Prove.
And Art Spurri, I approve. All right, that takes us to our recommendation letter for 1533 Main Street. There was a draft that was prepared with Christine and myself. We took all the notes. Tried our best to consolidate those into some fashion that works. If the board has any comments on this, additions, edits, welcome to here. Catherine, why don't you start?
Yes, Mr. Chair, first I wanted to thank you and Christine for the very complete job you did drafting the letter based on the board's comments. I do just wanna reiterate that this is what we call a friendly 40B. In other words, technically, strictly speaking, the applicant is not subject to our protective zoning bylaws. And but they are working with us and working with Zoning Board of Appeals to listen to what sort of amendments that we are requesting. And we are requesting quite a few amendments. I would just like to note, as as we discussed, we did receive some revised site plans suggestions from one of the abutters, Mr. Levitt, and I think those were passed on to the planning board electronically. And I agree that the suggestions that Mr. Levitt is making regarding revising the organization of space in the site plan is a good one, and it would allow for a lot of the abutters' concerns to be adequately addressed. I think the planning board, in all of our actions, in all of the history that I've been on the planning board, we always take great care to address the abutters' concerns. So I would like to propose, if the planning board agrees, that we, along with our letter to the ZBA, that we submit this suggested revised site plan that was submitted to us by one of the abutters. Yes, it's on the screen now.
Yep.
Along with our comments. I think revising the site plan as suggested would help greatly. I think what the concerns are here that I'm hearing from the public and that I would also like to express is that we do need housing. We need affordable housing in Chatham very, very much. But we still want to maintain the aesthetics and the livability of our neighborhoods according to the principles of the comprehensive plan. We don't wanna make those sacrifices. And there were some significant concerns brought up by the abutters, and this revision in the site plan does address most or not all of those concerns, so I would suggest that we include that if the other planning board members agree.
Just a question. So this really isn't showing the cottage style anymore?
No, this this is a, there was several alternatives that were suggested by the abutter. This was the latest one that I think was received and distributed to the board members. I I think that this is a much improved one, even even above the cottage style one.
Then I don't I don't disagree with that. I'm just, you know, for clarification, so on page three of the decision, it's the third paragraph. And it, well, one, they're not numbered, so the third page, third paragraph, very last line, it was suggested that some of the larger housing structures could re-reduce, so you'd wanna alter that. And and I would word it in such a way, you know, based on a suggestion or an or an example that was provided by an abutter and as attached.
Could I comment on that? I mean, we're suggest, we're sending along suggestions and recommendations. These are not definitive. That's not definitive. It's an idea.
I know, but if we're giving, and I'm saying it is a suggestion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Here is as per and attached from an abutter. This isn't from us. This is from an abutter, so that.
We're kind of gonna say now it's from us. We're saying that.
I am not comfortable doing that, because I don't think this board should be designing this project. But if we can give an example that was provided to us from somebody else, I I don't have a problem doing that. But the board should not be designing. We can give, and I think you've done an excellent job on this. We can give, you know, recommendations on how to improve, you know, the the circulation and are concerned with the larger building and the concern with the community building.
Right. Well, if you think about it, this has a lot of pluses of what we were what we're doing in here. This is an example of.
And that's what I'm saying.
Right.
It's an example provided by an abutter.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
And.
Cheryl.
Charlene. Well, the.
I think it's not wrong to suggest this.
Yeah, the 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 comments that we had from our board last week had dealt with a lot of the abutter-related issues. There is.
And I'm not disagreeing with that at all.
Oh, no, no.
Right, okay.
And we had thrown out a couple of ideas ourselves. This one happened to come along after our meeting. But if you take a look at it, the common area is adjacent to all the residential abutters. Yes, there's there's commercial motels on either side, but that's where these building buildings are being proposed and budded to and budding up to. And the buildings adjacent to the street frontage too, which is, I think, an improvement too on that. So this, there are a lot of advantages here. It reduces pavement area. It reduces infiltration. It provides a larger opportunity for that green space and buffering between the units and the abutting properties. So this this is sort of like a win-win. I would like to throw a couple of components in when the what the example helps with, okay, resolving. Yeah, Warren?
I agree with everything that's being said here, and while I had not seen this schematic or drawing submitted by the abutter, my only concern is that if we forward along this particular idea for how to address all the issues that we raised, it can be interpreted as we're endorsing it. There were some other ideas that were floated, which also would address many of the concerns which we had. The cottage cluster concept being one, eliminating or reducing the size of the common, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
Right.
So to the extent that the this isn't the only idea.
I I agree. It is an idea, yes.
Perhaps we should submit all of the ideas that were submitted.
I actually.
And recognize this being the most recent submitted by the abutter. Rather than submit this, which while it's it's an abutters' idea, if we submit only that, then it looks like we're endorsing that one as opposed to the others, even though the others would also address our concerns.
I.
That's just a question.
Is it?
I think that is a very good idea, Warren, because I think that the cluster cottage idea that was presented, I think, was also a good one.
That one, yeah.
Yes, so, you know, just here are a few, a couple examples of how the site might be improved.
Right.
But we're not, we're not the ones.
Correct.
We're not, exactly. Thank you.
And we could, so I do have a question about this one, and I agree basically with this, that we we should, we could submit all the alternative ideas and say we've attached some ideas drawn up by the abutters that help to address.
And I'm kind of thinking the zoning board probably has already seen them as well.
That helps to address the abutters' concerns.
But if this is something that we think should be considered, then it maybe in in their process, what they can do is ask the applicant to go back and revisit this.
Yeah.
Frank?
Yeah, I I have no problem at all in submitting it as suggested as one possible solution to the concerns that have been raised. And I don't think that implies that we endorse this particular one. It's just an example of something that might do so.
And I think we'll word it that way. Catherine?
Yeah, I I agree with all of that. Personally, I think the revised site plan two addresses the abutters' concerns better than this Exhibit C, but I'm all in favor of submitting, you know, both of them and saying, you know, these are some examples submitted by abutters to address the abutters' concerns. I think the main point we need to make as a board is that we want to see the abutters' concerns addressed.
I think our planner is a comment.
I I think I would like to say something. So all of the examples that you have received and all of the feedback that we've gotten over time, as far as graphics are concerned with this, have come from the same abutter. And I think as as indicated, that the other boards and commissions are receiving the same things at all. So I don't know necessarily, I mean, if you need to attach them or you you can if you want to.
I know.
But I don't think, he didn't ask us to pick one or the other. He didn't ask you to pick one or the other, so I would just be careful in how you proceed with that.
That's why I think Warren's idea of providing, you know.
And if I could comment.
Yes.
How to say this? I think, my opinion is that as a board, we do wanna, we do wanna say that the site needs to be redesigned to address the the abutters' concerns. And the planning board's comments to the zoning board of appeal, you know, they've asked us for our recommendations, and in particular, with regard to site plan design, which is what we review. So I think it is, even though they've received these already, I think it's good to attach them and to point out that, you know, we've received, attached our several designs that address, that could help to address the abutters' concerns. I think it's better to include them.
I concur. Okay. Any other edits or comments on?
I have a few.
Sure.
First page, second paragraph, right in the middle. After completing a review of the proposed development and listening to, well, the only one who listened to it was Christine that I'm aware of. So perhaps something along, and obtaining staff's review of the zoning board of appeals, public, open public hearing.
Can you, I need to find where you are. I'm sorry.
First page.
First page.
First page.
Oh, first page. There. Oh, okay.
Right in the middle.
And listening, oh, okay, okay.
Just 'cause I know I didn't listen to it.
So just scratch out that phrase.
Well, just gonna modify it, yeah.
Just modify it so that instead it says, and obtaining staff's review of the zoning board of appeals, open meeting, open public hearing meeting.
Yeah.
Page two, it's the second pair, it's really the second paragraph. Given that 48 units right there, one just below that, we don't have thorough fairs on Cape Cod. We have either roads or streets.
Roots.
So I would just, one of the busiest roads in town. That was, I was reading this actually out loud to my husband, and he goes, what? Somebody's from the city.
Good, good, good adjustment.
Second to last paragraph, it's just a typo.
You're kidding me. We got a typo in this?
Fourth line down, always to made after. Shouldn't it be always be made after the? Shouldn't it be always be made after the development? "To" doesn't work there.
Yeah.
The bottom of this page, second line, first, second full paragraph. "The planning board recommends that the developer consider reducing..." Can we please change that to the majority of the planning board? Because I didn't necessarily agree with that.
Where are you, Charlene? I'm sorry.
Very bottom of the second page.
Majority of agreed that a waiver...
"The planning board recommends that the developer consider reducing the height of the buildings along the side and the rear." I didn't necessarily agree with that.
Yeah, okay.
So it's just the majority.
Can I make a suggestion on that? Because I had some other changes.
Well, majority is, when we have a majority, if we voted on it, we say the planning board.
Yeah, I mean, let me suggest that might work. Instead of saying a majority, saying that third line, the line beginning with the word "consider," "Consider reducing the height of the business, the building along the sides and rear of the site, comma, although several members would be willing to consider a small, a height waiver for the front buildings."
I like that.
I think three members were.
Okay, so it was a close.
I like that. Third page.
Okay.
Third paragraph. Fourth line down, right at the very end. It says, "Buildings in town, consideration should be given to reducing or eliminating the use." Should it be the structure or the use of the structure?
And the presence of other... To reducing or eliminating the use. Reducing or eliminating the size of the structure.
I think something dropped off of that sentence is, I think you're right.
Yeah, something is missing, I think.
Yeah, something is missing. Let's see.
Building size comments were asked, scale and...
Given to reducing, eliminating...
Given the size of the structure, and the presence of other, in town, comma, and the presence of other community, that'll help clarify another. Consideration should be given to reducing...
Yeah.
Reducing the sizing, reducing the size of the building or eliminating.
Oh, you know what? Eliminating some units. I guess that's how you reduce the size, right?
Well, but we're talking about the community building in that specific...
All right, you're right. That's right. It's the community.
Yeah.
I think what you...
Eliminating the use of the structures so that...
You said a structure or eliminating the building, right?
Yes, that's what the meaning is.
Yeah.
You want to make the...
The building isn't necessary for the purposes of a community.
So eliminate the use of the structure or the structure?
I think what you, I think what Charlene's getting at and what you were trying to say is that in that structure, it doesn't need to have the whole structure be the community center.
Right, there can be some units in there.
So you do, so in a sense, you are saying that you want to reduce or eliminate the use. But maybe you need to say, reduce the amount of space within that building for the particular use of the community center.
Or eliminating the use within that structure.
Yeah.
I mean, you still need an office someplace.
Yes, you do.
That, okay.
I think they're not calling it a community building anymore. They're calling it an office building, just so you know.
Right.
We don't want that big office building.
It's a big structure. It's the biggest one on the whole site.
And then the next paragraph, where it talks about the signage, and this is the second sentence. "Specific material and wording for the entrance should be provided for HBDC review." They don't have review of this because it's a 40B. They can make suggestions, but they don't have any formal review. So I...
That's right.
That was my only other thing that I caught.
Right, specific material, signage visual.
On that point, this is a...
Well, maybe just take out the HDB, HBDC off and just leave the review. Should be submitted for a review though, correct?
If I could.
By the CBA.
We can say that, yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. I'm still on the last one. I'm sorry.
It is a 40, it is a friendly 40B. And to me, that means they will consider input beyond what they're legally required to consider.
Right.
So I don't have any problem saying review by anybody, frankly.
Yeah, they might, they might be minimal to HBDC review. I mean, from what we're hearing, they're amenable to all of our suggestions. That's why they're being asked for.
Yeah, I'd say unless using the word "review" implies or requires that review equals approved by. If that's what it meant, then I'd change the word. But I have no problem with HBDC reviewing, you know, what the signage looks like.
Why not just take out the word "review"? The specific materials and wording for the entrance signs should be provided for HBDC. Especially any signage visible from the street.
Okay.
That makes it less...
And that's all I had.
That's all you had? You're sure? Are you sure?
That's it.
Well, Warren, I think...
You have to change it to provided, not for HBDC, but provided to HBDC.
Yeah, okay.
That's a good idea.
That's a good one, okay.
Good idea.
Provided instead of four, to HBDC, HDB. Instead of four, two. Okay.
My turn?
Yes, Frank, please.
I think there was a suggestion that, I don't know quite who made it, but that there'd be a fence at the rear.
Oh, yes, yes. Yeah, that's a good, good point.
The rear and on the east and west side.
Oh, that's right. Because there is anything there now.
And didn't we want an evergreen buffer, evergreen screening? But the fence, that was, we could add that, yeah.
They are showing plantings on their landscape plan, all on the perimeter.
Plantings only last a while.
Yeah. What we did is we were encouraging evergreen because they weren't necessarily all evergreen.
They're also going to take a while to grow.
They just don't. You know, people plant white pines because they grow fast. But of course, they're massive forest trees. They plant them in a line, they grow up. In about 50 years, all the lower branches are off.
All off, yeah.
Right through them, and then they're weak, and then they all fall down.
And they're only good for visual buffer, not for...
And only for a while. So I think, I think a fence is really preferable.
Okay, so let's suggest the height on this. Six feet, eight?
Eight feet, plastic and white.
Or in addition, in addition.
You're getting...
He wasn't, he wasn't turned on. Six feet, do you think that?
A minimum of six feet. Solid fence.
Solid fence, yeah.
It needs to be a solid fence. I hate plastic fences.
Nice wood. But, and if I could suggest that it doesn't have to be either or. Like the fence, the vegetative evergreen screening could be planted in addition to the fence, I think. So it doesn't have to be either or.
It has to be both.
Yeah.
And I don't know if it needs to be the entire length of the east-west side.
That's correct.
But at least to the, maybe the zoning line.
Yeah.
You know, where that imaginary zoning line is between the business district and the residential.
Yeah, I think that would satisfy the abutters.
Okay, moving on. On the first page, first paragraph, last sentence. "The total number of bedrooms is 86," since that's not a sentence.
Where is that, first page?
Yes.
First page, first paragraph, last sentence. Just say the total number of bedrooms is 86. Always adjust suggestions. Page two, first, well, it's a paragraph beginning. Given that this is a 48 development, count one, two, three, four, five lines down. This conflict would, I would take out the word potentially. Going down another few lines, the line beginning with crossing.
They're still in the potential.
So what is, so what is your, this conflict?
Yeah, I got it. No, I got that one.
Crossing, it says crossing. See the line beginning crossing? A little bit further down, it says paved areas. I would say driveways or maybe thorough fairs.
Okay, where are you now again?
Right here. Okay, you just go down a few more lines where it says, the line beginning with the word crossing.
Okay, got it. Crossing, okay.
Delete paved areas and insert driveways.
Okay.
Or just drives.
Okay, and then at the end of that sentence where it says development, put comma and say particularly children and elderly residents.
I don't know where you are.
Same line, beginning with word crossing. Within the development, okay, instead of a period, put comma. Particularly children and elderly residents. Just to emphasize the importance of that point.
Should it be four children?
Before children?
No, four children.
I know, no, no, I would say, I think it works. You say, and most importantly, improve safety of pedestrians crossing within the development, comma, particularly, you could say, four children. Good.
No, no, either way.
Either way?
Either way, I think is good, yeah.
Okay, so we're set.
I think we're set with yours.
Going down two more paragraphs, a paragraph beginning with a waiver.
Got it.
Go down one, two, three, four, five, six lines to the number, the line beginning with number.
Yep.
Number of required spaces, comma, insert particularly noting the absence of any alternative public parking nearby. I think that was a point you made, Mr. Chair. You follow me? Shall I repeat?
Just a minute. Okay.
Okay.
That's good.
Going down two lines from the bottom. Board was also recommending delete two.
I'm sorry, could you...
Two lines from the bottom.
Board?
Board was also recommending, I think, delete the word two.
To delete two and put recommending.
Relocating the four buildings, okay.
Okay, next page. Now we come to the lighting. Okay.
There we go. Hey, we got a little image here.
Okay, so...
Hey, Frank's done some due diligence.
There is a sentence in here in the first full paragraph. It says, "Warm tone lighting should be specified for all light fixtures." But we don't say what tone. So you go on the Internet, you're going to get lots of pictures like this. I just picked one.
Yep.
And I'm wondering whether it makes sense for us to suggest a Kelvin. And if, just to give you more input on this, 2,700 is kind of like a candle light. They're very, very warm. Indoor light is warm light, 2,007 to 3,000 Kelvin, all right? Bright light is, as it says, kind of a kitchen or a workplace. Typically, warm light would go up to around 3,200 Kelvin, around that level. So if you wanted to specify now, we don't have to obviously, what might be acceptable? We might suggest 3,200, which would be in the, or less, which would be the yellow-white, you know, area. Or we can think about it.
Yeah, I would, I would prefer it a little less yellow and moving more into the daylight range, natural light, but...
Well, they, there is a tendency to try to not have the bright, bright white lights on the exterior of this. So I think the 3,000, 3,200 is in the right range. I think once you get to 4,000 and above, that gets to be really bright.
And it expands.
It expands. It's a little bit broader, and that could be the reason why those ballards were so high football, footcandle intensity is because they were on the bright side.
Right.
Especially in Cape Cod fog.
Yeah.
You see a warm light in the fog versus a white light in the fog.
Yeah, you wouldn't see it, yeah. So I think if we put in 3,200 Kelvin or less...
Okay, so then I would suggest in that sentence, "Warm tone lighting should be specified for all light fixtures, comma, no greater than 3,200 K."
Okay.
In the next sentence, next paragraph, full paragraph. I want to suggest a sentence be added at the end.
Okay.
This has to do with the comment, I believe it was from Bob, about there just being a long line of rectangles. And I'll just read it quickly. "Also, building articulations and style variation should be considered to avoid uniform rectangular buildings giving the impression of a large-scale development."
Which paragraph are you adding that?
Added to the end of the third one.
This one, so...
It's paragraph beginning building size.
Yes, okay.
So read it again.
Also, "Building articulations and styling variance should be considered to avoid uniform rectangular buildings giving the impression of a large-scale development."
I agree. That's a good addition.
That's all I have.
Small suggestion.
Just a minute, I just want to make sure Christine has that text. I only got the first half, so you got the second half?
I got the second half.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I'm going to reach out to you.
Yeah.
Good suggestion.
You may do that. Yes.
Very small suggestion, but again, going back to the second page, right after our site plan review criteria. Given that this 48-unit development is located directly off Route 28, one of the busiest roads in town, is it one of the busiest or is it the busiest? I think it's just, do we have other busy roads like that?
I think the busiest is probably...
All of Route 28 is busy.
Yeah, it is.
So it's, I think you should just say the busiest road.
This is, I think.
The busiest road in town, that's it. No, Main Street is 28.
Your mic, your mic.
It is 28.
Warren, Warren, your mic. Warren, your mic. Sorry, go ahead.
I don't think that's a particularly meaningful thing, but parts of Main Street in downtown, it may not be fast, but it's not Route 28.
It's busy, yeah, yeah.
And technically downtown Main Street's not Route 28.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, yeah.
I'm good.
I'm okay with leaving it the way it is.
Yeah.
Okay. That's it, Frank?
That's it.
All right, Warren, any others from you?
I really don't have anything to add to this. I think...
Catherine, you're done?
I think I'm done, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm going to suggest that we make some edits. We'll send this around. We still have to June 1st. If you can review it online, any final edits we'll do before we send this off.
Just make sure you only send it to staff, not to all, when you reply.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, and then we'll get the final version because technically the whole board should agree on the final version.
Well, we can't, we...
We can't. We can't do it online, but it's...
So my motion would be, if it's relevant, is that we approve the letter to the zoning board of appeals for the comprehensive permit on Main Street with the edits as discussed this evening.
Yes, exactly. Yes, exactly.
Second. All right, let's do a roll call vote. Catherine, help Warren?
I agree. I approve.
Warren Chan?
Warren Chan, approve.
Charlene?
Approve.
Frank Shear?
Approve.
Bob Dubas?
Approve.
Okay. Art Spru, I approve. Would have paused too.
So just for clarification, who was the second on that one?
All right, so we decide that we're going to postpone long-range planning for right now?